All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. All right, now we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you're wearing a hat, please take it off. Please stand, the flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, many of you may or may not know me. My name is Phil Ledoux. I am the moderator pro tem. I've been a Highgate resident for 35 years. I recently retired from the postal service, so I can actually do this because of the Hatch Act. All right, the ground rules for this meeting. Robert's rules are the basic rules of order for this meeting. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. Articles must be moved, seconded, and restated by the chair before debate may begin. Articles may be amended and amendments amended once with voting to proceed from the last proposal of the amendment in reverse order to the sequence of the proposal. Debate may be cut off by a motion and a two-thirds vote. The rule of the moderator is to explain procedural questions, but that no voter should hesitate to ask questions on articles to understand what is being voted on. Voters should stand up, give their name, and speak in a loud, clear voice. Well, you won't have to do that because Isabel and Lily will be coming around with a microphone. I appreciate it if you please stand when you do that. A voter will be recognized a second time on a particular article or amendment until all will not be, until all voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given a chance. So basically, you can speak on an article. You will not be able to get a second chance to speak until everybody else has been given a first chance. This is one near and dear to my heart. Cell phones will be turned off or muted. If you must use your cellphone, please excuse yourself from the floor as not to be disruptive to the proceedings. If you are not a Highgate-registered voter, same-day voter registration is available at the check-in table. Please make sure you are a registered voter prior to any voting from the floor, including paper ballots. There will be, there will not be any voter registration taking place in the middle of the floor meeting, including paper ballots. And also, please wait for the microphone before you speak. This is also a campaign-free zone. No campaigning of any kind is allowed inside the polling place. This includes materials of any kind, clothing, et cetera. The next, I'm going to give this over to Sharon. This is going to be the Town Report dedication to Mr. Dennis Nolan.
If I leave this here, can you hear me well enough? Better?
Yes.
Okay. So this year, we decided to choose Dennis Nolan as our Town Report dedication. Dennis Nolan was born December 15, 1945, in St. Albans Town. He's the son of the late Raymond and Jeanette Nolan and has two sisters, Joyce and Jackie. Dennis grew up working on the family farm and soon realized that he wanted a farm of his own. After graduating from VTC in 1965, he married the love of his life, Patricia. In 1975, they bought and successfully ran the Nolan Dairy Farm on the St. Armond Room for over 25 years. Sorry about that. Along the way, Dennis and Patricia raised three children: Dennis Jr., who passed away in 1986, Amy and Tina. Dennis is blessed with four grandchildren: Brandon, Sam, Aaron, and Nathan, and one great-grandson, Mason. After many years of hard work on the farm, it was time for a new adventure. Dennis started working for the St. Albans Co-op and recently ended his working career at the Mexico Valley Union High School. Even though he is now retired, Dennis still enjoys tinkering on the farm, working on his tractors, researching Highgate history, spending time with family, and attending auctions. Over the years, Dennis has served the Highgate community in a multitude of ways. Currently serves as a cemetery commissioner, president of the Highgate Historical Society, and a justice of the peace. Dennis was a recipient representing the town of Highgate at the 2016 Vermont Public Service Award with over 40, over 30 years of service. Dennis is also a faithful parishioner of the Catholic Church. Thank you, Dennis, for all that you do. The greater Highgate community is very thankful and grateful for all your service to our town. Thank you very much, Dennis. We really appreciate all you've done for us. Okay, Dennis, where are you hiding? Please accept this plaque from us. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask that the floor recognize Wayne LaRush as our representative to give an update from the legislature. Okay, Ty was the motion. Mark Maskel was the second. Go ahead, Wayne. All in favor?
All in favor.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. LaRush, you have the floor.
Mark? Thanks a lot. A lot of things going on down there. Of course, some things we've covered along the way. But that Affordable heat act is just came out in the Senate on Friday. So it's 10 low hopes. We repeat 11 in order to uphold government that, but it's over the House. I don't see much hope of stopping it. It's only 30 Republicans out of 150 members. So we can only do a little bit of the best we can. I think the corrections and institution committee, which is a capital committee, money committee, divides a lot of advanced or useful, you know, water projects and facility projects. We love the control projects. There's a lot of money in the budget this year. There's a surplus in the past years. And so the governor took a cash run onto some of these where modern money has been used in the past. So it's, it should be giving opportunities to towns to get grants and stuff next year. There's a lot of federal funding around. That's going to run out in about 2026. So everybody needs to be on stick to accomplish projects. So, you know, underway, the polls is anything and done. So we could capture some of that money. A lot of problems, of course. We're dealing with the prisons. The prisons in St. Albans, they're working 16-hour shifts. And the understaffed hospital, emergency room, the block, the drop-in, and mental health cases. Next thing we notice is the accident people from the prison. The babysitter. So a lot going on, not necessarily all good. But hopefully, we'll come out of there with some improvements this year. If you have any questions, if you want to know anything else or else, I'll try to talk to town officials, all four towns, to try to make sure we're giving them a lot of opportunities. We're also trying to help with the, trying to kind of feel this. As you know, they're going to have to move from the airport location because of an air-related food disaster coming in, which had prior to federal 118th Center of the Airport, which would have restrictions on things. But pretty much everybody who left such a laptop wants to have. So if there's, if they can find some money, some place to put it, get a project manager to use so it can move forward. The whole breakdown of that obligation, we're trying to help make up that pass. So if anything, if you have any questions, Dennis, listen.
No questions? No questions for Mr. LaRush?
Henry, can you explain the heat act a little bit so that we all can understand it?
Well, the good explanation is one simple thing. I can explain the whole act. But basically, this is only a form of one prevention thing. The estimate is going to cost everybody 70 cents a gallon for a few of the fastest payments. So I want to caution them.
Any other questions for Mr. LaRush? Go ahead, Todd.
Our representative Lisa Handup does a weekly or monthly update to make the ask. You post a guy's update for us and you email us or something to guys for the screen.
Yeah, I will do that. I haven't done it so far. Because Lisa, she's, she didn't meet here today also, but I think she says, particularly her family has a family. She's out of state, so she's out of state this weekend. So I don't want to go to four towns. But I will do that. I've been really busy. We've got 185 lineups in that Appleville. And it doesn't test on that. I would say on average, three or four different people have testified that I don't know those lineups. And so it's quite a lot of work to do. But as it comes forward, we don't know what's going to happen because we haven't got to the point where we're going to down. But when we get close to the dam, we should have a pretty firm idea how much money we're going to, which one of those, which one of those lineups. So then the municipal grants, grants for recreational things in town, all of the places. We have a lot of idea of how much money we're going to get with the towns. And so if you do, thanks.
Any other questions? Questions? Thank you, Mr. LaRush, for your time.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Lily and Isabel with the microphones. Could you guys please stand in the middle of the aisles? So halfway, so you can at least look left and right and see who needs to use the speaker. Okay. The meeting will start when I read the town meeting warning from Highgate. The legal voters of the, of the town of Highgate, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Highgate Elementary School gymnasium in the town of Highgate on Tuesday, March 7, 2023. Between the hours of 7:00 in the forenoon, at the, which time, the polls will be open, and 7:00 in the evening, at which times the polls will close to vote by Australian ballot upon the following articles of business. Article 1, to elect the following town officers: One cemetery commissioner for the term of five years; One library trustee for the term of five years; One library trustee for the term of one year remaining on a five-year term; One lister for a term of three years; A moderator for the ensuing year; One select board member for a term of three years; One select board member for a term of two years; One select board member for a term of one year remaining on a three-year term. The legally qualified voters of the town of Highgate, Vermont, are hereby warned and notified to the meeting at the Highgate Elementary School Gymnasium on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. to transact the following business. Article 2, to receive and act on reports of the town officers for the past year. Article 3, shall the voters of the town of Highgate set the final date of payment for fiscal year 2023, 2024 property taxes to be Tuesday, October 31, 2023, with the payments to be received in the town office by 4:00 p.m.? Article 4, shall the voters of the town of Highgate vote all public questions and budgets by Australian ballot? Article 5, shall the voters of the town of Highgate to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Highway Fund with an estimated $873,387 to be raised by taxes? Article 7?
Mr. Longman?
Yes, sir.
You skipped our original lines.
Oh, I did? I'm sorry, my bad. I'll go back to that. Article 5, shall the voters of the, of the town of Highgate appropriate $457,000 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the capital improvement plan with an estimated $357,000 to be raised by taxes? Article 6, shall the town of, shall the voters of the town of Highgate appropriate $1,024,387 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Highway Fund with an estimated $873,387 to be raised, excuse me, to be raised by taxes? Article 7, shall the voters of the town of Highgate to meet the expenses and liabilities of the general fund with an estimated $682,774 to be raised by taxes? Article 8, to transact any other business legally authorized to be transacted, considered proper and necessary when met? Is there any questions? Being no questions, we'll move on to Article 2. I need a motion to start this.
I'll make a motion.
We have first, and we have the second. So we have a first and a second. All in favor to move on to Article 2?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Article 2 moves on. This is you guys, town officers, the select board, Article 2. Article 2, to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year. Do we have a motion to accept? Is that Maskel makes the motion? Do I have a second? Mr. Shalit makes the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Article 2 passes. We'll move on to Article 3. Shall the voters of town of Highgate? Do you understand the Article, Article 3? Do we have a motion to start the, the article? Ms. Maskel, do we have a second? Second, over there? Is there any, any discussion? Is there any questions? There are no discussion and no questions. All in favor of passing Article 3? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to be moving on now to Article 4. Everybody's read this. I'll read it again. So, shall the voters of the town of Highgate vote all public questions and budgets by Australian ballot? Is there any discussion?
Should we have a motion?
Go ahead, sir.
Want to motion first?
Yes, sorry. Okay, so we need the motion to start that. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we move on to discussion. Any discussion on this article?
Hello?
I'm Michael LaRush. How many voters are there, honey?
2,400.
2,400? How many people are there? 60? How can we as bodies think we have the right to deny other people the vote? We should have all votes go down, show it to the House. Whereas in a modern world, people keep coming here and not talking to them. They got a search warrant, they get jobs, they can take it.
Don't talk with your hands. Look at your face. Get it out.
Okay. Any more discussion on this article? Wendy?
So I don't know how many of you picked up the flyer at the doorway, but I did put some statistics together over the last 10 years. They are at the doorway, and I do have copies here. Basically, back to 2013 to present, what our numbers were voting from the floor versus at the polls. The biggest year we had was 187 people at a floor vote in the last 10 years, which is about 8% of our checklist. Most recently, in 2020, we had 78 people, and I think this year, we have even less. So I just wanted to put some numbers out there for you all to think about and look at as part of the discussion.
Mr. Shalit?
Glad you're here. So if we vote yes on this, does that mean town meeting is no one?
Yes, that would be correct.
The floor meeting would be no one.
Floor meeting would be no one.
That's correct, okay. Hold on a second. The select board would like to speak. So yes, it would mean that the floor vote would no longer exist, but it does not mean that that information is still not available to the public. It would mean that in order to have your say, as we're doing today, we'd ask you to come to an informational meeting, which we have every year. We don't have a lot of attendance, but we try to answer as many questions as humanly possible. We're not, we don't try to deny anyone their right to vote. We're not trying to take away anyone's ability to find out what's going on in their town and where the money is spent. There has always been this question on the ballot for many years. Now that we've gone through COVID and we've seen what happens when we go to an Australian ballot, there is concern that maybe we are limiting the number of voters that participate by having just a floor meeting. Some people would prefer to have the floor meeting. That is certainly a personal choice. But as the select board and town employees, we're asking you to consider what is the right way to go forward. Is that?
My name is Mark Maskel. The question I have, is that the results from people of the town who are not people getting that result voting on the floor?
It's that microphone, Seth. It's terrible for you.
That's my question. I want to know if we have any, any information from other towns or any other issues we voted on an Australian ballot that shows a significant difference of people voting in Australian ballot versus voting on the floor?
According to Wendy, she had said that that paperwork that she had at the front desk will show the difference between Australian ballot and floor stuff.
I'm, I got this. So I also wanted to mention BT Digger did send out a survey to all the town clerks a number of months ago on how towns were planning to run their town meetings this year. And up 252 municipalities, 175 are holding some sort of floor meeting today. There are a number of towns, along with Highgate, that are asking their voters this question today because their numbers, there's a difference in the numbers. So the towns of Duxbury, Bakersfield, Bradford, Coventry, Danville, Highgate, Lunenburg, Marshfield, Stratford, and Wilmington are all asking their voters the same question: Do we want to permanently move to the ballot? Does that answer your question at all, Seth? Okay. And I also wanted to add, I did have a phone call yesterday, and I told her I would share her sentiments with the crowd. She got her absentee ballots, and the man called me and said, "Where's the rest of it?" And I said, "What are you asking?" The last two years, we had everything on the ballot. So she was able to vote on the budgets and the public questions. This year, she just got the elected officials, and she used the words disappointing and exclusionary, that she was not able to vote on the same articles as everyone else because she was disabled. So I told her I would share that.
Any more questions? Mr. Funear?
Thank you.
Please stand. Thank you.
Question, I guess I have. Should the article be changed to ensuing years? Because does the end town meeting want to be all this? Or Article 5, 6, 7, and 8 still aren't on the ballot?
It's still going to happen today, Mr. Funear.
It would be ensuing years, Todd.
Insuing elections, votes, because we could have special votes later this year that it would apply to if we change it.
All right, sir. Mr. Flute?
She's got a question. The select board now puts their budget together to go where it takes them to be. And it may so be. At what point, if the majority back there are going to be able to rearrange the budget because the budget started at Dr. Bailey's bed? I proposed that this year, if we wanted to increase volumes, anybody accelerate, we can do it. After that, we have to vote the entire budget down and come back to the whole vote?
So, two parts to that question. First of all, yes, Australian ballot is yes or no. So you would have to vote yes for an entire budget or no for an entire budget. At which point, select board would have to come back together and produce a new budget, rewarn the meeting, and have another meeting. The first part of that question was the informational meeting. And if we were to go to Australian ballot, I would suggest that you have your information meeting prior to a finalization of the budget so that you have firm figures to go forward with. So if you wanted to adjust those figures. Having said that, those meetings are all open to the public. Everything from the CIP to all select board meetings, all of that information is public. It's on our websites. And we are extremely interested in what our taxpayers have to say because frankly, we're spending your money, and we want to know which way you want to go.
So I guess the question lies, if we decide that we do this and we vote to have Australian ballot, how do we determine whether or not you have a meeting prior to the Australian ballot, an informational meeting where we can discuss and make changes? Who's responsible for doing that? Is that the select board or...? Is that the Select Board or?
Yes, the Select Board would propose at this time, if that's what you would like to see happen, to make this into the article as we vote right now, so that you can assure that the Select Board is bound by law and by vote to have an informational meeting prior to the selection of the final budget.
Can you do that here on the floor without it being advertised as an article in the Town Board?
Uh, no.
Are you asking to amend the wording?
Yes.
What I'm saying is, if we decide to vote yes on this and we pass it, then where's our control as to when they have an informational meeting to be able to provide taxpayers with information on the budget and be able to make changes prior to the actual Australian ballot?
I would say that one person came to our informational meeting this year, and if more people were in attendance, if it was voted down, the Select Board might know where to trim or go back and reevaluate. But people actually need to participate in meetings and informational sessions in order for them to know that. So they can make the motion, but who's going to attend?
Same thing right here. Talking about the same thing?
Did that motion be made in Article A?
Yeah, it's a two-day motion in Article Eight. If it's legally authorized, it can be transacted, considered proper, or necessary. My moderator is saying that no, we cannot amend the Article Four because it is published. But Article Eight, Wendy, do you know legally whether we could do that?
If it's germane to what we're talking about, yes.
So Wendy says if it's germane to what we're talking about, yes.
Also, Zed, would it be helpful if the Select Board would commit to maybe a postcard mailing to registered voters about the info session prior to it being finalized? Like, I think you're questioning how to get the word out that it's happening.
Right, I mean, what do they, they do the same thing when they do our high school budget registration, right? They advertise, they send out literature for an informational meeting prior to the vote. I mean, that just makes sense.
I agree.
Yes, I would agree with that as well. And yes, the Select Board would commit to getting as much information out there as we can to inform the public prior to a meeting.
Okay, who was next? Go ahead.
Randy Maslow. With having two small children at home, I just feel that the evening meetings are very difficult for me to attend. I really enjoy attending these meetings, but could be possibly in the future, consider a weekend meeting or something that might be a little bit easier for families with young kids to attend.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
I think we should think long and hard before we cancel something as traditional as town meeting. We're just getting over the COVID restrictions and people are still in shock over that. And we've had less attendance because of COVID. And I'd like to make a motion and table this article.
There's a motion on the floor or is there a second? Is there any discussion? Is there any questions? There's no discussion or questions? A vote to table this measure to a later date? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Now we're gonna have to go to a hands-up vote. I can't tell the difference, so all in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your hand. The motion on the floor was tabled.
Point of order, I don't believe you can table an article without setting a date for it to be readjusted.
You can table it, it has to be, in the article is being said is, would you table something? It has to be at a specific time or date. It doesn't say exactly a specific time, according to the rules, as I understand it. So the motion on the floor is to table Article Four to a later date. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, can I get JPs to count for us?
So let me ask you something, though. By doing this, there's no more discussion on this. We're not gonna vote on this today, we're gonna vote on this on another day.
Yes, it will be warned and it'll be voted on at a different time. So, please put your hands up if you are in favor of this and could our justice and peace count that? You have one up here also? Did she count it?
I get twenty-four. Did you do the back seat? Yes.
How many yea votes?
I counted.
Thirty-six.
All right. Those opposed to that, please raise your hand.
We have thirty-six. Paper of tabling the issue and twenty-six. Thirty-six, yes, twenty-six, no.
We have twenty-six votes for?
Thirty-six, yes.
Thirty-six, yes, votes and twenty-six, no votes on this article. So this article will be tabled. All right, we're moving on to Article Five. I need a motion to open this article. First, then we have a second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Maslow? You want them to go through this and review it? As we go through and then do questions after? Is that kind of the gist of this? Okay, that's how we'll, as the Select Board goes through this and then we'll have discussion and questions after.
Let's turn it out for microphones next up. Capital improvement plan. This money sets aside money for the future purchase of items for the town. This is on page thirty-four. Okay. The municipal complex has asked for zero dollars for the capital improvement plan. The money that they did have, they used for flooring this year, which you will notice in the bathrooms and the community roof of the municipal building. Parks and Recreation has asked for $10,000 for the future purchase of a zamboni. They have asked for $10,000 for the upkeep of the arena parking lot. They have asked for $20,000 for the upkeep and eventual replacement of the arena roof. They have asked for $5,000 for seventy, for the seventy-two and zero turn four eventual replacement. They have asked for a gazebo slash stage for the summer concert series and other programming. Their total ask for this year is $62,000. Do I have any questions about those monies? Mr. Chevagian?
Just curious how that compares from last year.
So you can... Shelley, do you have the full budget?
Just for Parks and Rec, Claude?
Yes.
Last year was $35,000 for Parks and Rec and most of the addition is for their stage slash gazebo for the Summer Sounds. Can everyone hear me in the back?
No, really.
That one comes up in a lot of notes.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Parks and Rec last year was $35,000 total in the CIP and the majority of the difference from last year to this year would be the $17,000 for the stage slash gazebo that they are looking to acquire for the Summer Sounds Concert Series.
Yes?
What's the advantage of the payment before you get something that's supposed to make payments afterwards?
Well, the first advantage is that you could have it for this season. That is a total cost for a stage gazebo. The others are the fact that you don't have to have a bond or moral for money for the replacement of equipment.
I would ask everybody, if you are recognized, please stand so people know where the voice is coming from.
Hi, I'm Debbie Rose, and I just have a question on the gazebo. Where do they want to put that?
Ty, would you like to answer, or Ryan?
So there's been a couple of locations we've thought about. One would be the Falls Park and another would be on the recreation land or real land. Another location for that. We might maybe that we try to locate the money and get outreach for it. Be a good idea for that.
We have a question out in the back there.
By the way, we can't hear anything back there that has a voice. I have a question about the arena parking lot ones. You have $20,000 in reserve and now you're asking for $10,000. And the estimated year replacement is this year, but there's not an estimated total loss of the project. I was just wondering what the plan was for the replacement of park models, replacement and repair.
Ryan, would you like to take that question here? Ryan, is that a right commission president?
Chair. So, my answer to that question is currently the back section of the parking lot is still up to where you have fence, which would be installed at that point. So the addition added to the parking lot, I would say, and repairing the section that is paved, that's what you want to call it behind there, so that's what goes on. That's a good question. The total acreage on the whole property? Behind it, would that be painted? Acreage would be a good word. I would say that it'd be posted thirty feet, thirty to forty feet behind the building and then the width of the building plus the parking lot. That, a big rectangle would be.
Okay, any other further questions about Mr. Chevagian?
So I'm looking at the Village Core Vision flyer. And pardon the, yeah. The Village Core Vision is create a small outdoor gathering space such as a garden, gazebo, jam stand, and/or other community amenities. So if we do the gazebo, does that mean that that's gonna disappear from the other? Or is the Village Core Vision, which might be funded by grants, a better place to put that?
I think the Village Core is probably many years in the future. So that is something yet to be decided. Yes, Chris Shepherd?
Hi, I'm Chris Shepherd, I'm on the Village Core and like Shannon said, we're in visionary stages now. It is very hard to figure. We're still trying to figure out what's to be with the property and best action to put in front of ours.
So again, that vision for that property will come before the voters. So that is word on the meeting. Mr. Rainville?
So the gazebo is gonna be stationary or is it gonna be something that would be moved in one cycle? What side are you thinking about that?
Ryan?
So the thought of the size, it would probably be more permanent. Not to say anything can't be moved, but it would be designed as a.
What about a size? Ryan, do you have a size to answer Mr. Rainville's question?
Last year, we used a trailer that my father had donated to us. That's probably eight feet wide. We'd be a little more like twelve feet wide. It wouldn't have to be as long as the forty-foot trailer was, so twenty-nine or thirty. Here we go.
Mr. Rainville?
I'm not against this. I just want to, I don't, remember it's something we're gonna upkeep and something that we're gonna maintain. And when I go by the Frog Park and I see the little station there for the bus with thirty windows for half the summer. I myself, though, why isn't there? I think it's a good thing for the people that need it. I probably should trip me the one stop, we can clean the windows if it bothers me. Just remember what we made and produced, we're gonna maintain and upkeep and make it look good and vandalize and all that stuff.
Why doesn't it have something portable to be established, something permanent? Fires are portable. I, I see that as an option is what I'm saying. Portable, something you move and you can connect to, or a process of match, a way for you to do something permanent? Me, I, I give all open that very, you know, moving cars and everything. I think the rec would certainly entertain that idea in their future meetings, which also are open to the public.
My question is, when you do do the gazebo, can the people of the town voters give you ideas on what it would look like and would you do what's not going to have a good service?
Mr. Mark, so do you have something else? Any other questions about that monies? Yes, Sue?
I just want to make sure our gazebo and roof rarely needs to be tended to over there. I attend a lot of hockey, it's a winter, there's a lot of older people myself, like a couple of tall. We need to be more reliable and easy to take care of before the next hockey season. Because somebody lost and you're a good one. And that's all I've got to say, but it's better than my poor.
Are you talking about the roof or the entrance?
The arena, as you walk in, it's dripping right there, it needs to be tended to really bad.
Yes, the entrance?
Yes.
Uh, I know that they are...
I know they really want to.
Have thoughts for it, are investigating now. Ryan, would you like to come?
Yes.
So money in here is for the existing large roof, if it's not even... We are in the planning stage of a new entrance. Um, that is one of our high priority pieces, it's part of our future projects. But this, just you, we have done a quote to reseal the whole roof. Um, it's a lot of money, but it's very true. So this is, we have a problem, there is a section that you will head on doing if you seal the start, you have to go out, we haven't the money for it, and then people are back to the wall. That's, that's the thing, entrance is not, when you say roof, it's not an entrance. But that is definitely on the forefront of the...
Okay. Any more questions? Mark?
I'm not picking on my nephew, I promise. But I'm not serious, and maybe it's just because I'm old and I haven't been out to shop for him, but, uh, twenty-five grand for a zero turn. That sounds like a lot of money for a zero turn. Two years ago, I bought them from my house. I wouldn't use to mow the fifteen acres of it that we got, you know, not fifteen, ten acres that we mowed. And I prayed how it's paying, and it's right eventually. Uh, the one we have now, I think, uh, it's a big D zone. I, I don't know if you're certain, but I believe it bought in, uh, early two thousand, so, uh, we're hoping to buy something that was been, yeah, and then a few years out of, even though it's not like it was something like we used to.
And also, this year, we were only asking for five thousand to put toward acreage.
No, I can just say that's not much. That's such a trap to us to make, though.
Yeah, well, at this, right, this would be for two thousand twenty-seven replacement, so it's still years to come in the future.
Hello, guys, I'm Laura. Um, I was just wondering about parking and fixing the parking lot at the arena, but it's so crowded in there, and there's space. I didn't know about that, and it's not a lot of that. Is there anything for those in the future that you'd face the parking lot?
The biggest problem here is we don't own over half of that parking lot. The railroad still, or the East Coast Railroad vision still has, I think it's, uh, sixty-five feet from the center of the bridge that they all, so we're really, really big on what we can do at the current parking lot.
I just have a question about Parks and Recreation. I was maybe not in the wrong, but I agree, but parks, as far as parks, how come when someone asks you to do on parks, why couldn't Parks and Recreation then be something that matters?
Debbie, can you hold the microphone? Sorry. There you go.
Like, just so we have, um, I agree with you, but lawn mower, but it's Parks and Recreation, why can't they pull one out of the lawn, so then why are we looking always at how do somebody do with parks when it has to do with dog?
I don't know how to answer that. I didn't even realize it would be something down.
So we do do some, something out of the Parks and Rec, but it actually happens to be Park and Rec members that are actually doing physical mowing at this point. Um, they have just, uh, hired a buildings and ground person, Rob, who was sitting over there with Jeff, but he was wandered away. Um, part of his job will be to help, um, take care of the rec center. Um, and as we continue to grow and we have projects that we're trying to do, it's possible in the future that he will also be able to take over some of that. But at this point, uh, he has a full schedule of, uh, projects at the arena that have taken his forty hours a week plus. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on with the capital improvement plan. The Highgate Public Library are asking for fifty thousand dollars for a library relocation and the build. Do I have any questions?
I'm not aware they want to relocate, and I want to know why we need to build a new library.
Rebecca, would you like to take that question?
Two parks, it was where we'd like to move to and why? So we need to rebuild because, as I think a lot of them now, the current library is very small. We're very grateful for the beautiful, large yard space that we have access to, but the building itself, very small, it is not being accessed, and there is a vault in the center of the small building, which means that it's getting smaller. We would like to rebuild on the mission property, but there is a lot of work to go on that project before a decision between, not a decision of the library, the cities, that is a decision that the town will go on when it has the time.
So I feel one thing we have, we didn't talk about the library, because I don't agree that we should build a new one. We have enough place there to have a room to it. And as far as kind of other things, we have a community room at the town clerk's office. And I hate to say that I love the library, but our younger generation uses their phones for ninety-nine percent of everything. I don't see the town putting all that money into the taxpayers without something that's not bringing taxes into the town. Really, you can use that mission property, either sell it for some, for business there, or an ugly housing or something instead of a library that's just going to take money. Schools have libraries and...
So I'm waiting for Rebecca to respond. I'd like to say something about the library. I like the li, I look at the library the same way I look at the rec center. You look at our county, and you look at the drug overdoses, and the opportunity for our children to get involved in the drug system, where the drug money can provide them with a lot better living than you could get from working forty hours a week. And I think that's a damn shame. But I do think that children are our future. And the opportunities we give them when they are young, including the library and the rec center, determine how they turn out to be as adults. If you won't find adults, you have to provide programming for them. You have to give them an opportunity where they don't get into that life. When Wendy tells me one week, not too long ago, that there are three narcine overdoses in the town of Highgate, the little, small town of Highgate, that is depressing. Part of our job as citizens is to raise our children properly. The rec center provides opportunity where children are kept out of the roads, they give things to do with their time besides getting into trouble. The library does the exact same thing. It provides an opportunity, it shows them a world where there is things beyond their comprehension in the small town of Highgate. I would ask you not to limit the future of our children by dissing things that you yourself might not take advantage of. I'd like to see the children in our town have a hell of a lot better future. Rebecca?
I don't think that I can say it much better than that. Um, in the last two years, we've had a new library director out of his pocket and over eighty thousand dollars in grant money to the community that was not through taxpayer money, and I think that that is incredible. Um, with what Sharon has said, I think that it is our obligation to provide the opportunity for all of the people in Highgate to have more experiences and to enrich their lives, not just the children, but everybody. And that's what we are trying to do. We meet on the first Wednesday of every month at the library at six-thirty, and like the rest of the meetings, they're open to the public.
And that is, Virginia just made another point.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that we can't go on to the existing building because of, um, on both sides of property, where the property line is, and in the back of the building where it looks like there's a lot of space that you see, um, second system for the garage, so we can't go out or side to side. So we can't, we can't build on, we can't go up against the wall. So those certainly were looked at, but, um, it's both are possible.
The other thing I would say is that I stress the children, but you know that the library feeds, uh, seniors? They provide meals. You know that they have adult craft classes? They have a book club? They want our town citizens to become involved. Um, we go through life, working and working and working. Sometimes we forget to enjoy things. The library provides us great opportunities. Stop and out and potty are fantastic. They've done a lot for the programming, uh, to make sure that all people are welcome and enticed. Mark? Sorry.
What is the capacity? What is the capacity of the present day library? I'm sure there must be some hundreds of that number of people that can be in there.
There is. Rebecca, do you know the actual figures?
Thirty-four.
So thirty-four is the largest group of people that could be in the library, and let me tell you, thirty-four is pretty squishy.
Since we're having this conversation about the library, has there been any discussions about the sale of the library to our neighbor, per se? Because they're the ones who stand to benefit purchasing that more than anybody. Has there been any mention or any talks about it?
Oh, yes. I, I've had a talk with Mr. Valley as to, uh, the purchasing of that property since we share the septic system. Um, he believes that that library is a lot less valuable than I do. Um, so we're, um, still in negotiation, shall we say?
Okay, thank you.
A lot of people probably don't know, but I would like to have Rebecca, we just had a flood in the library down in Martha's, so I'm coming to Rod, but don't hear us, but maybe they flooded out there downstairs, and I want to come back here or come in the library. People speak out loud, and people know it was running out, and people used to hear this.
Have we built anywhere else in town, other than right from center of town, the library? Say, how do you spring? You've got a lot of population down that way. Why does everyone have to be built right from center of town?
Rebecca, anyone else?
I just like that guy. We have a big area, like Spain, you know, up on the right hill. We've got something between two panels, and we got ready to do it for a hundred feet. And then we're way down, we can spring it off. So we should look at what stuff that's how factors, I mean, in sections of our whole population now, just move things around a little bit, so people have to go to other parts of the town and spend money on other parts of the town, that's a good thing also.
I think that that's a fair point. Well, thank you particularly for that, the libraries, and ask to be part of the tour committee. I'm not on that committee, it's a lot of ass, I think, why are we looking where I can that I would, but they're very far from being established at this point.
Any other questions about the library? Mr. Rainville?
I think this is a dimension in the past. I think if you're selling a library, you're limiting yourself if you make it a more of a, uh, community center. Which, I'm not going to say is a, a big difference, but I think it's more inclusive than what, I think most people would envision a library being.
I would agree, and I tend to tell you that, um, they are very invested in the, the community center portion of the library. Um, they want to serve the entire town. Rebecca?
I just realized a couple of minutes ago that it's just easier to say library every time. Um, but several years ago, we did change the name, and I've just noted to whoever makes the book that in the capital fund, it says Highgate Public Library, but we did change the name to the Highgate Library and Community Center. And they're standing a big push on our end to really focus on that community center part. But we do realize that what a library has... But we do realize that what a library has traditionally got is really changing. And we also think that it is important for all towns, but specifically our town, to have a place where the community can gather. And we are hopeful that in the new building, we would have the space to do that. This is why thirty-four people can fit in the library now. There's a government hole in the middle of that, so they couldn't be on the seat either. But we would like a space that's bigger than thirty-four. But not crazy.
Okay, any other questions for the library? Seeing none, we will proceed. The Hyde Volunteer Fire Department are asking for ten thousand dollars for the replacement cost of fire engine number one. They are asking for fifteen thousand dollars for the... Sorry, thirty thousand dollars for the replacement of fire engine number two. They are asking for thirty-five thousand for the replacement value of the nineteen ninety-eight tanker. And they are asking for ten thousand dollars for the ultimate replacement of the utility truck. They're asking for a total of eighty-five thousand. Do we have any questions about those monies? Seeing none, we will proceed. The Public Works and Highway Department are asking for ten thousand dollars toward the replacement of a nineteen ninety-one carrier. They are asking for fifteen thousand for the replacement of a two thousand one John Deere loader. They are asking for thirty thousand dollars for the replacement of a two thousand four John Deere backhoe. They are asking for fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the two thousand fourteen Western Star pavement truck. They are asking for twenty thousand dollars for the replacement of the two thousand fifteen Ford, that's five fifty, plant truck and plow standard combination. They are looking for thirty-five thousand for the replacement of a two thousand sixteen International Single-Axle Dump Truck. And they are asking for twenty-five thousand for the replacement of a two thousand twenty International Pavement Truck. They are asking for a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Do I have any questions? Zep?
I don't agree with that. When we're talking about replacing that single axle truck...
If you like, change your...
When we're talking about replacing that single axle dump truck for the town, is there any consideration into replacing that with a tandem which we originally had?
Yes, Zep, we, our whole plan is to replace that with a tandem.
Okay, so asking that, we still need the, we still need the five fifty, F five fifty? With the plow, if we're gonna replace that with a tandem? We used to do it with just three.
You're talking, yeah, but we use it for parking lots and the last phone for parking lots, the arena, and, and they use that for if they gotta go cut down a tree, or...
And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not standing here before you trying to to raise what you're asking as far as monies for a truck, but you folks do realize that a tandem truck right now is running right around two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and it'll be more in another five, six years.
Yes, we do, we've been talking, and but I, I think a tandem for this town, it is the way to go. Than a single truck, we're putting a lot of money into that truck, you know? We just can't do it, Zep, it just... Just too small.
Instead of investing in the grader, why doesn't the town pave all the existing dirt roads of the dirt?
No, yeah, I kind of agree with you, but it just takes time and, you know? Takes time and, and money and, you know? There's been a lot of talk, you know, we've talked about dirty road, you know, and and foreign road, okay, well, I'll put that on the list. So, yeah, we're, we're trying, you know? And, you know, and right now, black pop is so expensive, you know? As it was last year, where we had to cut back some, you know, and so we, we haven't put it on the back burner, you know? You know, we haven't forgot about it, you know, and you can just answer your question?
That, and the fact that it's about sixty thousand dollars to pave a quarter mile, and that's not providing a base for it. Well, that's a lot of money. So we're trying to do it as economically and quickly as we can. Any other questions for the Highway Department? Henry?
Just to piggyback a little bit on Dan's question of, is there any information out there that, on what it costs? Let's just take the Gore Road, for instance. What it costs to maintain that per year compared to a dirt road? And the reason I'm asking is, the section, let's say, from where Richard Rangel used to live, up to the Hyde front of life. That was built in seventy-three. To my knowledge, there's been nothing done to that section other than being and not off. Yes, it was a big expense when it got done. But what I'm kind of saying is, we probably should look a little bit deeper into some of our dirt roads. And if we were to build them up to what it should be, long term, the maintenance could be much less than throwing stuff at it on a year. I don't know, I don't know that information, but that's why I'm... We should be starting to look into that.
Yeah, I agree with Henry, and I, I got the same, you know? That's something that, I don't know if Butch has any idea what he thought, but maybe, maybe Butch?
That's Russo, Hyde Highway. Uh, just going back to the Franklin Road, when they renewed the Franklin Road for those figures, it was basically a million dollars a mile to redo that one.
So, yes, as we look at those costs versus throwing money at it, part of that program is stormwater. State now is requesting that we do a certain amount of stormwater programming. And for us, that's a benefit because it also keeps roads up to a certain degree where paving becomes a little more feasible, once you get that base. So, yes, it's a slow, arduous process, but we're steady but slow.
I just want to clarify, the title of the column, the part that's to the right, it says "Net Cost to Town." And then down below, if we haven't got to it yet, other capital projects, it says "Total Cost to Town." Is that the cost that we're seeing on a year-by-year basis that makes up that total, net cost to town? In other words, that's the total taxes that are gonna be collected in order to fund that?
So, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is, why is there a difference? And equipment has some trade-in value, or some resale value?
Yep.
And that's why it's less for equipment than it would be for projects around town?
Okay, because some of them have blanks, like there's no net cost to the town, like with the Fire Department. And, you know, we're raising thirty-five thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, but it says "Net Cost to Town." So I'm just curious, is there a net cost, or are those not taxes that are being collected?
Unknown plot at this time. It's so far out, the purchase date would be so far out, that the net cost to the town is unknown. What is a fire truck going to cost in ten years?
Okay, okay, but when it says "Net Cost"...
After trade-in, potential grants, that's what it will cost the taxpayer.
But the, so the taxpayers are paying each year sums of money that are actually a cost to the town?
Towards that purchase.
Right.
Yes.
So the, the net cost is actually the final cost?
Of the purchase.
Of the purchase. Because all the money this raised over the years to fund these things is actually a cost. Okay.
Mark, do you have a question?
First thing I want to ask is, is throughout this whole CIP, are, are our funds from the transfer station still being applied towards the CIP?
Transfer funds were transferred to the general fund. And we've been through this, well, years ago now, when we last had our, our floor meeting. Shelley can tell you more about that and how that happened.
Two thousand and thirteen. And two thousand and thirteen is when they were transferred, so ten years ago.
You still need to ask my question, are any of those funds used to apply towards CIP?
Never were. This, the... The transfer station funds raise about sixty thousand dollars a year in host fees. And it offsets general fund expenses. So it's general fund revenue, and it has been since two thousand and thirteen. Long before my time.
You don't need to have to agree with it.
You don't have to agree with it, that's how it was when I got here.
And that has been verified because Wendy and Shelley both spent a lot of time looking up those minutes and trying to find out where those motions were made. Any more questions about the highway? She's gone.
I apologize, my memory drops. But I was going to ask her, but when we get on the discussion of maintenance of roads and the grader and stuff, are there any grants that you applied towards paving?
Yes, yes, there are. We couldn't pay what we do without grants. It would just be cost prohibitive, we couldn't do it without them. And we do have opportunities for grants for equipment. When we bought the last fire truck, a portion of that was great money that we were able to procure. There are also other opportunities that we look at quite frequently. Hyde is always on the hunt for money that we can use toward our expenses. And that doesn't matter whether it's the expense of the rec department, a new fire truck, a new highway truck, or anything in between. We're always on the hunt for the availability of monies to help fund. Any other highway questions? And I can tell you one note to the maintenance of roads. Butch and his team have also started practicing on paved roads, and isn't seeing a much improved schedule on the maintenance of that improvement. So that, in hopes that that'll last in a better quality in more years.
I don't know if this is the time to ask it, but is the town, does the town have a policy on accepting new roads? And are we taking any roads over to the town?
We have a policy. And it is at the discretion of the select board. Zoning makes certain standards in town before you can accept a new road.
I don't know, she said it politely, but we're not taking it... Right now, the select board, we're not taking over any new roads, you know? Any developments. We take them over, you know, I go around with Butch, and a lot of them need special coverts and you know, it's just, right now, we've got dirt roads to worry about, I think. And if we take over more roads, we're gonna need more trucks, more people, you know? And I, I just think right now, we, we're not in a position to do that.
Zep?
Hey, now you opened up a room.
Okay.
You don't reduce their taxes when you charge them property taxes, do you?
What's that?
No, you don't.
But, but, Zep? We don't, and what about these guys that are on dirt roads? We don't reduce their property tax either, right, Zep?
You know, Richard, that you've taken over some dirt roads.
What's that? Some of them, some of them, but we still got some we knows that.
Okay, so if you're not going to maintain, and I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I'm addressing our selectmen, then how can you consciously charge the same tax rate that you charge anybody else that has their road maintained and takes advantage of the, of the town?
They don't do a, they ain't gonna take over Flint Drive, and I pay the same tax. All right, Zep?
Richard?
Yeah, you said it.
We're, we're talking about dirt house out on the road.
Gentleman!
Lampkin Street, with, with five, six, eight houses on it, and other properties throughout Lampkin Street. You, you're charging them the same tax rate, Richard, but, but you're not maintaining their roads.
No, but their home association should be maintaining their road, and their, the landlord of their road should be maintaining their road. So basically, what we're saying is, major developers are gaining a lot more financial gain from that road than the town is.
You get the taxes every year, right?
We do get taxed every year, but taxes are, are based all around. You know, they're, they're pretty fair on what you get for a product.
So, this is kind of a two-part question. Have you been asked to take over some roads that a development procured? And have you climbed those?
Yes.
And they've been brought up to standards?
Yes.
I'm not in this situation, but as a builder, and talking to a lot of new homeowners that I think that have gone through the zoning process, and kind of understand that if everything is built to specs, that it was, it's the hope, it's not a guarantee that the town will take it over. I think we're providing a disservice to our, our community. I would hope that the zoning or it'd be very well known that we're not taking a lot of these roads over. Because I think a lot of these new homeowners are thinking that in the future, once the building is done, they're gonna have a piled road, a piled street. And I think if the people are going through this process and doing everything to standard, I would hope that that's not a, a new direction for our town.
Trust me for you, Henry.
Yep.
So, okay, but then the other hand, if these farmers come knocking on my door, you're not taking care of the Cassidy Road, or the, or the Parrot Road. You're not getting out of them, Butch, you're doing this. So where do we draw the line, Henry? what you're doing is, so where do we draw the line, Henry? Is what I'm asking, asking you, where do we draw the line?
If you're drawing the line, I say zoning needs to start telling all these developers, don't expect us to be taking this road over. So that those new homeowners know that. We've been in this situation in the past where a developer did not bring things up to standards and the town did not take it over. But I think if we've been in the mode of, if everything is up to standards and that we would more than likely take it over, and I think we have as a historical part in this town of Hyatt, I think if we're changing that direction, I think these people need to know that.
Well, I believe that it's fairly straightforward in the permanent process that there is a possibility that the town might take it over, but certainly no guarantee. What's happened that's completely different now is this idea of stormwater. We are being forced to do a lot more stormwater work in order to qualify for the grants that we get. And we're required to do this upkeep when that's not done by the builder and it's not done by the developer and the town has to go in and do it, which would be extremely cost prohibitive.
Mr. Mayor, first.
Well, the developers should be paying impact fees, and that impact fee would cover a whole lot of expenses that were in front of us at the time. I don't see any reason why, but having the government, the government, our street not have as many homes on it as it is. And the only benefit from that, at least the benefit is the developer, who's driving a pile of, of things.
So, impact fees have been on the planning commission's radar for some time?
Again, I worked in a development, I built two houses in one area. They were said that they had to have sidewalks in that development. Sidewalks to absolute nowhere. Why are you making these people do this if you're not even thinking about taking the road? So again, miscommunication between zoning and select board or the public.
Well, I will tell you that the zoning and the planning commission are working on rehabbing the zoning rules. So I would hope that when those two commissions meet, that you would be able to attend. And I think these are very valid questions to ask. Why would you need to have a sidewalk to nowhere? Why would you need to have this standard if you weren't gonna take over the town? You know, you have to take it over. But it's a position right now where, yes, there is some conflict in the select board and zoning. On what can affordably be done.
Should this be under Article Six, all this discussion about, when we're talking about trucks? If we keep discussing now, we're not gonna have it to talk about Article Six.
My turn. It'll all get talked about one way or another. Okay, any more questions for highway? All right, so let's move it on. So, in and around town, we are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for the Meishy Road Slide. We are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for the Village Core Master Plan. And we are asking for twenty-five thousand... For the Transfer Station Slope Stabilization Phase Two. Total of seventy-five thousand. I will tell you before discussion that we have been extremely fortunate. We have received a lot of grant money this year. Our transfer station will, we have provided enough funds to cover that project in full. But we are asking for twenty-five thousand only as a buffer zone so that if the project runs over due to cost estimations and the time that that goes forward, that we'd have enough to cover that without having to get money from somewhere else. Meishy Road Slide, we are also in the funding process. We have received a great deal of money, we still are short some, but we're working toward getting more grant funds for that project. The Village Core, twenty-five thousand dollars, we're allowing them to continue with their studies and provide match funds to continue to go. Having said that, any of these monies in the CIP, if the town does not use all of the money, that money comes back to the voters and you decide where that money should go. So if we don't need to have twenty-five thousand for the Meishy Road Slide, that money will be returned to you and you can decide where you'd like to put it.
I want to ask a question about the Jedware property, because that's a landfill.
Yes.
I know Stone Environmental just published test results. And what liability is the town going to have for the Jedware property on Route 78? The former dump?
The town currently has no liability for that property. We don't own that property. The property owner owes taxes to the town. At this point, that property is being studied and test holes are being dug, evaluations are being done. We have a private landlord that is looking to purchase that property from the current taxpayer or non-taxpayer. Jedware, Michael Jedware is the current property tax owner. If they can strike a deal, that's not my place to say. If it's a, you know, I wouldn't put it out for, you know, it's a private deal. But if that goes forward, they are working with the Northwest Regional Planning and getting funds so that that can be covered and will be a liability to no one. So they are working for super funds to get that cleaned up and have it be an approved use for the feds and for the state.
Does this Jedware property have anything to do with the proposed projects for the airport?
Not really, no. I mean, it's possible, but not at this point.
Why isn't that public information? We can go into the town and find out about any property in the town of Hyatt and who owns it.
Yeah, and you just know who owns it. So when the purchase is final, you would know what it is, but I wouldn't, if so-and-so were buying your house, I wouldn't know who so-and-so was.
Point of order, germane to the topic.
Yes, I agree with him. Germane to the topic, stay pertinent to what we're doing. No, we're good.
So anyway, until that deal is final, then that's not the town's information, that's a private sale, not a public one. And it may cause injury to a contract, which has nothing to do with the town. Our only interest is to get it back on the tax roll so we can collect tax on it.
On the Meishy Road Slide, this is the first time we've put money into that. Has anybody looked into relocating that road behind all those houses? I know we talked about that years ago. And if we're gonna keep dumping money in there, why don't we relocate that road?
Well, the town has looked into relocating the road. Unfortunately, that would require a great deal of legal prowess and we would have to claim eminent domain and take someone's property. Because those property owners are unwilling to sell to the town. So we have looked at that, we've looked at the cost of building a new road, we've looked at the cost of the repair. Part of the problem has been, in order to reach the safety standards that's required by the state, it has become a much larger project than we ever envisioned. We are also in the process of a study to look at the entire Meishy Road, which will eventually become a partial island if Mother Nature has their way about her.
I'd like to make a motion to remove this question.
Motion's been made on the floor. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? There being no discussion? All in favor of moving this question from the floor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, we move on. Okay, under this article, we have discussed it, we've had the questions, we have done, we have beat this to death. As far as we're gonna do it. So, under Article Five, we have done the discussions, the questions, everything. All in favor of Article Five?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to Article Six, so I have a motion to start Article Six. I have a motion, I have a second. So, Article Six. So the voters of the town of Hyatt appropriate one million, twenty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Highway Fund with an estimated eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-three, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. All right, do we have any discussion? Is there any questions? Being no question, discussions or questions? All in favor of this article, Article Six, as read?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to Article Seven. The voters of the town of Hyatt appropriate one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the general fund with an estimated six hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars to be raised in taxes. Motion to start this one? One? Do we have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? Okay, is there any discussion on this? Mr. Masterson?
I'm assuming this is where we may be able to discuss the taxes on that Jedware property. All right, if this sale goes through, are they going to pay the delinquent taxes?
Property cannot be sold with delinquent taxes. When, when?
Yes, you know. Are they gonna pay the taxes?
The taxes would have to be paid first or at closing.
That's all I asked.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Do you see the balance step at the bottom of page thirty-five? There's an entire block that shows the Jedware property's taxes. The total amount includes interest and penalty. These taxes go back to nineteen eighty-four. The principal is the taxes that were assessed to the property every year, just the principal taxes.
And that continues every year, right? Up till present?
Right, they're taxed just like everybody else on the grant list. Yes.
Any other questions? You're up again.
I'd like to ask about this harbor money, which I have heard that is COVID money, is that correct?
It's grant funds that the town has been awarded.
Grant funds that the town has been awarded from the state and from the county.
Is that from COVID?
Yes.
So is there a balance on that? I've seen you use some.
Yes.
Is there a balance on it and what are your plans for designating that money?
So, yes, you just voted to approve the use of one hundred thousand dollars of it in reducing the capital improvement plan. We have one million, ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nine cents minus the hundred thousand now. We have several different projects that we're looking to see. First of all, one hundred and thirty-five thousand of that money goes directly to the rec department because they were the largest loser based on COVID revenues. So because the state mandated an emergency shutdown, the arena was unable to operate at all. So they will, through our figuring and Shelley's diligent work, they have lost one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars during those years. So they have that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that goes directly into their budget. Now, part of that money, I believe, is going toward a new entrance so that we don't have the physical danger that Sue was talking about earlier.
Okay, so you described roughly two hundred and fifty thousand, about one point six million?
Yes. We have, still have that money, we have Village Week's water system that may need money if we go forward with the Village Core property plans. We have airport infrastructure money that might be used as opposed to using the bond that we approved before. So we might not have to use any of that five hundred thousand that the voters approved for bond money. We have possibility of library capital campaign money. We have the possibility of additional money for the Meishy Road stabilization. We also have the arena roof, which we know is going to cost us a lot of money at some point. We also have the cemeteries, which have cost the town a lot of money in the upkeep and taking over of the cemetery that's directly behind the municipal buildings. So there are a lot of projects that may need money in the future. We have not committed money to anything yet besides those that have already been voted on.
Can we use any of that money towards any of this discussion, like reducing the general fund or any of these projects whatsoever? Can you explain the specifics of that money and what it can be used for?
That money had originally been given to the town with a series of...
Conditions?
Yeah, conditions. Some of those conditions have been released now as time has gone on, but we still have twenty-five page document that has lots of conditions and things that we have to meet in order to use that money.
Hold on a second. Under germane's, we should be talking about some of this, what you're talking about. Under germaneness, we should be talking about some of this, what you're talking about, under Article 8 with the amendment under other business for some of this money. It's because we're diverting away from the article. I understand where you're going with this.
No, no, Phil, I'm not diverting from the
No, you're just adding more to the pie.
We can use this, we've had many discussions here today already about a new roof for the arena and other purchases. And I'm asking, why can't we use this harpa money towards that? That is perfectly legal in this article to be asking that and opening it up to public. Because basically what I'm hearing from charities, we can do what we want with it. If we want to choose to use it here or use it there. I'm not making accusations that we spend money frivolously. What I'm saying is, the town doesn't have much of a say as far as where the $1.6 million goes. Especially when you've only spoken for $235,000 worth of it. And it is perfectly within my right and any other taxpayer to ask, what are we going to do with that money? And can we use it to reduce the cost of the roof for the arena? Or any of those other things? This is why we have town meeting folks to discuss this stuff.
So, I thought I just answered that question saying that, yes, we have a series of expenses for the town that this money can go towards. We have not decided on final figures and we have not voted to do which projects how much. But that all is upcoming. We have this money, we don't need to spend it all today. It is our hope that we can use it to keep ourselves going further. It puts us in an excellent financial position. It puts us in a great position to use it as matching funds for the grants. It allows us to have a cushion. We don't have to worry about having the lights on today. And Zed, go ahead, make sure you go ahead.
I just want to know one more thing, alright? And I won't beat the horse anymore.
I don't know if I go that way, man.
Is there a timeline of this grant?
2026.
So roughly you've got three years to make up your mind.
Yeah. Select board meetings are every Tuesday, or every Thursday, 2nd, 1st and 3rd of the month, sorry. You're welcome to come. I mean.
There's an open seat, Zed.
Yeah. Yeah, because God knows this is a real yippie-doo job. But I can tell you that we go through this budget line by line, as can be evidenced by the video on the website for the town. We don't take your tax dollars willy-nilly. We pay taxes here too. I know, I'm just saying that we're trying to do our best for the town's folks. The two of us up here spend enough time at meetings and committees and try to keep abreast of what the heck's going on in town to the best of our abilities. Which I can, just as a final note, say that we did check with the Secretary of State and we could go forward with this meeting legally. We will have discussion with one of our selectmen when we get our hands on them.
Alright, is there any more questions on this article?
Is this the kind of ask about the what we're going to do with that Meishiro house that we bought? Is it getting torn down? Is there an amount that it's going to cost to tear that out?
That's not under this article.
So, the Village Core master plan has been trying to come up with those figures and trying to provide the town with as much possible to bring to town meeting. It was my hope that would be this year's meeting, but apparently that did not happen. So my suggestion is from Village Core Property to shake a leg, people.
Mr. Plouffe?
Just a second, Keith. The Village Core meets the second Wednesday of the month. We're meeting tomorrow night. And we expect to have more information at that meeting. Unfortunately, the consultant that we are working with wasn't going to have that information for us until this month's meeting. And unfortunately, that meeting happened to fall the day after our meeting. Those meetings, Highgate usually has open on Zoom as well. You can't make it into the town office.
Alright, Mr. Plouffe?
I don't know if this is the right time to find out before the select board meeting. And knowing what the select board does, the number of meetings they do per year, the number of hours they call calls at 11:30 to 3 o'clock in the morning, and all they do is for easily $100 a year, what they get paid. When I saw them, I figured it out one day. I figured out they're earning $11.3 cents an hour for 15 you out. Is this where I bring up that we can increase their salary?
I would do that under Article 8, other business, please. Would it be in the General Fund? Okay, so yes, this is the place to do it.
Alright, and I'd like to rate it that we receive $1,500 a year for select board meetings.
You're making that a motion, sir?
Yes.
I have a second.
A second?
Alright, is there any discussion? The motion was to take the current wage of the select board members and raise it to $1,500 a year, is that correct?
Correct, I think that the chairman goes a little higher, correct? Is it the chairman's a little higher?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, do you know the percentage or breakdown of how much more that is? I don't have it in front of me.
The chair of the select board receives $1,250 a year and the remaining members receive $1,000 even. So I don't know where you got your $1,100, but that was wrong. So, are you doing $1,500 across the board?
Yeah, just the ones that show up.
Okay, hold on a second. So, in order for this to move on, you have to rephrase it. Are you asking for $1,500 per member of the board?
Yes.
That is your original, that's not your original, is that your original amendment? Okay, the original amendment is $1,500 per member of the select board. Is there a second? We have a second. Now we'll go to discussion. Mr. Maston?
If we're going to do this, Keith, and to be fair about it, you give each member a $500 raise so that each select board member, who moved to chairman, gets $500 more and that makes it fair right across the board. Right now, the way of presenting it is the chair gets $250 bucks and the other members get $500 bucks. I just think it makes more sense, if you're going to give them a raise, give them all an equal raise. That's the way it's always been done in the past.
Any other discussion? Alright, and Mr. Plouffe, would you like to amend that?
Yeah.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
Point of order.
Yep.
Must be the original second.
And the original second was there and he did that. Thank you. So, if I got this correct, the motion on the floor is to give all the select board members a $500 a year raise. Is that correct? Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Forden, then I'll get to you.
Is there a feeling that we'll have an easier job of filling our select board positions by raising the down $1,500?
There. Bonnie, Bonnie, you're next.
You guys all do a lot of time in taking care of the town. And there needs to be someone who keeps up the slate going. And I'm assuming that you have that. I was a school board member for a good number of years. And I was the chair of the school board for a good number of years. And a lot of time is done by the chair. So I, my, I really So I do think that the chair should have more money because I'm sure that whoever puts in the town, it's not just the regular members, don't put in a whole lot of money in it.
Just a point of discussion. I appreciate the thought, I really do. To me, it makes no difference. Most of my money that I've ever received from town gets donated back to it, whether the rec department, the library, the historical society, or a group of the town gets that money. But it's nice to know and feel appreciated and I do thank you for that.
Same here. Thank you. I do this because I like to do it. And if you told me today I was going to get zero, I'd still do it. You know, I like to mingle with people, I like to talk with Zed. And sometimes, we don't always agree, but you know, I like arguing sometimes. And you know, I thank you. But even if you told me zero today, I wouldn't walk off a state, I'd stay right here. Because I like this, I like this down at Highgate. Thank you.
Okay, so, any more questions on that amendment? Being no questions on that amendment, and the amendment was to add $500 to the select board's salary per year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, so, that being said, is there any more questions on Article 7? Being no more questions, I've got something from Shelley to update the article so you all understand this. So if you have pen and paper, if you want to write this down, please do. Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate appropriate, this is new figures now, to meet the expenses and liabilities of the General Fund with an estimated $685,274,000 to be raised by taxes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 7, motion carries. Now we get to the final article. Article 8, to transact any other business legally authorized to be transacted, considered proper and necessary when met. Do I have a motion to open? We have one motion. Do I have a motion to second? Have a motion to second? Any discussion? You might as well just hold on to that. Go ahead.
I never knew where to ask this question and to be honest, it's irritating some, especially this year and this one, having to deal with our current power source. Alright, if people don't realize it, we have more than one power company in Highgate. We have Swanton Power and we have Vermont Electric Co-op. And we had some, oh, there is Green Health too. Okay, I'm standing to be correct. I realize that in Vermont, you really don't have a choice. There's no such thing as choice of utilities. But I'm looking to start a conversation and find out what direction I may or may not be able to go in. Because personally, and we have no control of what happened way back in the day when we sold our utility. But I think what troubles me is living in Highgate Springs and we have Swanton Power less than a mile on the frontage road down the road. And we have Swanton Power over on the Forden Road, less than a mile away. And we do not have choice. We have, you know, we basically have to go without power for four days during Christmas while Swanton enjoys their power. And my question and my concern is that how can we go about, or is there, do we have any control as a taxpayer over whether or not we could possibly have choice of utility? Now this is no strange thing. This happens in the March Day all the time. People have choice over utilities. And especially if your utility's not living up to their, you know, their expectation or what they're, you know, what they're supposed to be doing, what they're supposed to be providing, the service. Furthermore, if we're moving into a future of electric, I mean, we need a reliable source. And it's been proven time and time again that Swanton is a way more reliable utility than Vermont Electric's Citizens Utilities or however many times it's been purchased, has been proven to be. So I'm looking for some advice or some direction I may look or may not be able to go in. Is it our legislature or where can I go to try and remedy this problem?
To be frank, I have no idea. It's a very good question and one I never thought of before. But you're right, Swanton Village tends to be a much more reliable source. Yes, and much more affordable, but partly to do because of Highgate and the Hydradam. I guess I would have to say that that would have to be researched, that I would have to find out who would make that decisions. Is Wayne still here?
No.
No, okay. So yeah, we can certainly reach out to our representatives to find out. We can reach out to Swanton Village, but I don't, I do not know the answer to that question. Yeah? Keith?
I have just a question. How does the select board stand on the Franklin County Field Day that we may be thrown out if come Thursday night?
The select board, since they received the letter from the state, has reached out to that committee to help in any way we could. At that time that the letter came out, we were told to keep our nose out of it. And they didn't need our help. That was a personal statement made to me where the gentleman came to my word. Frankly, I think he was mistaken. I think he could use all the help he could get. As far as I know, the select board's still willing to help any way we can. So, as someone that's on that committee, tell us what we can do to help.
Speak up, take the mic and pass the information out.
Thursday night, 7 o'clock at the Gaby, all our legislators are going to be there. And all the state members are going to be there.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I guess if we're asking questions that we didn't know where we would ask earlier, I was wondering since the beginning of this year, who sets the fees at the transfer station? I was wondering since the beginning of this year, who sets the fees at the transfer station and if Highgate has any input into that.
So the fees are set by Casella. And no, we don't really have any say in that. We have a contract with Casella that was put into place many years ago and has not been updated since. When that contract ends, we'll try for a renewed negotiation, but at this point, we are stuck in a pattern that's not necessarily to our best advantage.
How long is the contract for?
Heidi, you telling me we have another?
She can't speak.
I would ask that the floor recognize Heidi Rich Valenta as the town administrator to speak.
A motion has been made on the floor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
I don't have much to add. I'd have to look at when that expires.
I was thinking it was like five years from now. It was quite a lengthy contract.
It had several five-year renewal clauses in it. I'd have to do a half a month of this call.
Okay.
Do you know if that's the same contract that where residents were free, Highgate residents?
I know of no such contract where Highgate residents were free.
Has anybody reviewed the possibility of the Jedward problem that started in 1984? I haven't read that in a while. It's very possible the way I see drunkards being established and old drags are. I think something should be, there should be an oversight committee watching the activities of people who are reckless with their property.
So our zoning administrator looks over those types of complaints. When they become excessive, the state becomes involved and is authorized to issue fines, as well as the town is authorized to issue fines. Case in point, this is new information, but the town's been working vigilantly with the bank that bought the property at 28 Mill Hill. We have come to an agreement that we will put that forward as a FEMA project in which FEMA money will pay for the cleanup of that property and the eviction of the residents. And that property will no longer exist except as part of the town of Highgate's park. So that will be cleaned up and it will not cost the town a dollar.
Something happens uncoordinated, this problem taking place, there would be no money being spent.
The problem was COVID. COVID got stuck in the middle of this process. The town had been in negotiations with several landowners where this is a problem. One state had put fines and complaints against and the Mill Hill property got caught in the court system with COVID and tax sale.
Truthfully, this problem existed before COVID came around. Therefore, somebody should have oversight powers adjusting that problem with the person who is making the problem.
Well, it was addressed. It's just a long time of coming around.
If that's some property bought with FEMA money, we can't build that back, right?
Correct.
So you can build a Zippo on there? You can build a fee.
You might be able to. But since there are maintenance, bank empty courts and lots of legal jargon tied up in that, it'll be a little bit, but it will come to the town at no cost.
Okay, is there any other questions and concerns under this? Mr. Randell.
I want to go back to question four just a little bit to better understand. Because I'm assuming it's probably going to be there next year. I think the question was asked by Zed, you know, we as the public would like to have a say in what's going on. So the discussion was kind of like, okay, our pre-town meeting would be that discussion. Well, to me, at that point, the book's already going to be printed and done with so that there would be no ability to change anything in this book. Am I correct in that statement?
So I had expressed an interest earlier, this question came up, in having that information prior to the printing so that you could adjust that. And maybe it's not one meeting, maybe it's several meetings over a month, two months. Get as many people as we can involved. But yes, in order to do that and be able to change it, yes, we'd have to change the date of the information meeting in order to get that information solid prior to printing.
I guess my next, my question to go along with that is, having been there, is there time between doing budgeting and printing to do these one or two meetings?
You would have to up your plan schedule. So you'd have to start your budgeting process earlier than here.
Any other questions? Sue.
I've been chairman for the bake sale for the last few years for Memorial Day. Last year was the biggest we've ever made. We made over $870 for the memorial in the park. We're planning on doing it again this year. I would like to thank the people, but I just want to let people know they came over from the fire department for the bake sale chicken when they came over and got dessert after. I'm planning on still doing it this year. I just want to get the word out that we need bakers. The last few years, we have gotten some of this work very well. I just want to let people know that we are planning on doing it again this year.
Any other questions? Oh, we have one in the back.
I didn't see there a question on keeping the town meeting there or not, and I think that we should. But I don't know, Shelley, Wendy, if there's a possibility to make the town meeting a hybrid meeting? Can people vote via Zoom? No.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Being, being no further questions or discussion, I've got to hand the mic to Sharon before we go to adjournments.
So last few years have been rough on all of us, whether we realize it or not. It's delighted, I'm glad to see as many people here as there are. And I want to tell you that we're pretty lucky. We live in a great town where great things are happening, where we have wonderful people that give a damn about each other and you don't get that everywhere. So I just wanted to point out a few things that are really good for this town. The library is one of them. They are bringing in lots of money into the town. They are providing lots of programs for all ages. They have very committed trustees. It's a fabulous thing. It's a real boon to our community. Our rec department, we couldn't ask for a more dedicated rec department. Jess is doing a great job with programs and getting kids involved. They're looking at doing more things. They have a great relationship established with the school system, which we all, we have always had. Things are looking up there. The select board's also looking to work more closely with the town because we're all in this town. It doesn't matter whether they're at 46 with you or not. This is our town. These are our people. These are our kids. We brought lots and lots of grant money into town to provide projects, funding that go way beyond what we could ever finance ourselves. We've been very fortunate. Heidi's done a great job of looking for grants and getting that money into our town. We have a startup, Habitat for Aviation, which is a hands-on learning school that's being set up at the airport. So that kids can enter into great paying jobs without having to go to college. That's so expensive. So that they could stay in town, find jobs here, or they don't have to leave. The town itself's in excellent financial shape. Our auditors come every year. They make sure nothing is out of place. They account for every penny. I stress to Shelley a little bit, but she's doing a great job. She's very careful with your money, just like the select board is. We have some cushion, Zed, and I promise we'll look out for that extra money very closely. And we'll use it all to help the town, I promise. And we welcome your input. You know, no kidding. You've got an idea, we're willing to hear it. We are working to get that Jedward property taken care of, to get it back on the tax rolls so that that money can come back into the town and not be a loser, not be a liability. And the last couple of things are about our people. Every time we ask for volunteers, we are very, very fortunate that people step up. The Village Corps asked for people. They got them. People that are interested, people that wanted to help. It's fabulous. All of our committees have full members. They do a lot of work. They're involved in their town. They give a damn. What better thing could you ask for? Bruce Ryan just retired from our planning commission. He worked for the town for 26 years. He had a full-time job at the town. Man did it because he liked to. We're very grateful for his service. We'll provide him with a plaque once it comes through shipping, which is a little slow unfortunately. But when a man puts 26 years in, he gives a damn. He wants to know what's going on in his town. But all our volunteers are like that. They put a lot of time, a lot of effort. They do a lot for us. Sometimes we don't see them, sometimes they're in the background. But they, we got a good bunch of people. Thank you.
Is the sound any better, Sharon? Keith, good. I want to recognize, you see a few young people running around here, but I want to recognize those two young ladies that carried the mic for us today. If we could give those two girls a round of applause. Are you all done with that? The only other article that we have is adjournment. I need someone to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. I have, Zed makes the motion, second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Have a good day, be safe.